Good evening. Called to order the Glen County Island Planning Commission for Tuesday, January 18th, 2022, at this time. If you'll join me with the open invocation and then followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Heavenly Father, we're grateful for this day and this opportunity and this new year to do the business of Glen County Island Planning Commission. Blessings upon each one represented on the commission tonight and for those in the public who are here with us. We ask you to keep safe our men and women in uniform wherever they serve, also the men and women on our police and fire departments wherever they serve. I ask you to bless blessings upon this meeting as we conduct the business. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome students from the College of Coastal Georgia here tonight to watch this commission meeting. I apologize, I don't think we're going to have any fireworks tonight, so maybe you want to plan to watch our agendas in the future to see when there's something that's maybe more complex and could get some a lot more public care, but sometimes government is mold, government is mundane and boring and you wonder why you do it, but we do it because it's just the law that we do it. And what we're hearing tonight is an application for a particular owner to request, so I hope that you plan to come back in the future when we have something that's maybe
Get a little more meat on it.
A little bit more meat, but anyway, thank you for being here and I hope you learned something tonight. The Island Planning Commission considers applications for site plans and village preservation permits. In addition, the planning commission considers requests for rezonings, conditional special use permits and ordinance amendments. Makes final decisions on site plans and village preservation permits and makes recommendations to the board of commissioners on rezonings, conditional special use permits and ordinance amendments. Public comment period for site plans and village preservation applications. The public comments on site plans and village preservation applicants will be limited to 60 minutes total per application with a maximum of five minutes allocated to each speaker. Comments be limited to relevant information regarding your position should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allotted. The applicant may then provide a rebuttal to any testimony. The chairman may terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The chairman will terminate a speaker's time if the speaker begins personal attacks. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. This time, Commissioner Rustry?
Yes, Mr. Chair, and I'd like to make a motion to add to the agenda tonight, if I may.
Go ahead.
Yeah, the, I would like to add an update on where I am with the ordinance amendments concerning single-family parking standards, site coverage limits for single-family lots and sleeping room density for single-family dwellings.
All right. If there's a motion, there a second? Commissioner Rook, seconded. Any discussion on this? All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All right. That should be added at the, after we hear the application on.
Yeah.
All right. Approved the amendments for the regular meeting of the Island Planning Commission held on December 14th, 2021, subject to any necessary corrections. There a motion to approve?
Mr. Chair, I so move.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. All right, motion been approved. This time, we'll have the election of officers for 2022 for the Island Planning Commission officials for chairman, vice chairman, and recording secretary separately. So if I have a motion for chairman, I would appreciate that.
Mr. Chair, I most bet Mr. Robert Rustry be elected as to serve as chairman for the year 2022.
Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Commission, Dupalito seconded. Any discussion? Any other further nominations? No, no, for chairman, for chairman. Another nomination, okay. All in favor of Chairman Robert Rustry, for, but Robert Rustry, Commissioner Robert Rusty, for chairman for 2022, please raise your hand. All right, that's unanimous. At this time, entertain chairman for, vice chairman for 2022.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Bryce Brock for the, for the role of vice chair.
All right, any other nominations from the floor? All right. All in favor of Commissioner Bryce Brock as vice chair, please raise your hand. All right, it's unanimous. Can I take the pleasure of nominating Janet Loving as our recording secretary for 2022? I put that in as a motion?
I second that.
All right, we have a second from Commissioner Rustry.
I think we all second.
Yeah, all in favor, please raise your hand. All right, Commissioner Rustry, Chairman Rustry, there you go.
Oh, Christ, already. All right, so I can be heard. I guess, I don't have an agenda. I guess items, items three and four were withdrawn, which one, one was a Palm Street storage rezon that has been withdrawn, as well as a Palm Street storage site plan. Both of those were withdrawn. Is there any, any discussion that's necessary on that?
I'd just like to ask, did you get a reason why they withdrew it, Ms. Leaf?
There wasn't, there was not an official reason. I know they were looking at some different designs and ran into some design challenges, but the letter we received said they were withdrawing both applications.
Mr. Chair, I believe the agent for the applicant is here, and maybe he can shed some light on that?
Commissioners Brian Hunt with Robert Civil Engineering. I do appreciate you guys' time. So, the, the design challenge we faced with this project, as many of y'all know, we worked to get reduced, reduced footprint, you know, trying to incorporate the buffer and the easement as required by zoning, and in doing so, we got to a position where we just ran out of room for underground storage or underground detention, and so I think we're gonna, we've withdrawn the applications, gonna kind of sit down as a group and just come up with, see if there's some other options that they may have for this development and/or future developments that may go in there. So it's at this stage, the, there's, it's not, it's not doable for this project.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the commission here and then thank you?
Thank you.
Next on the agenda will be the Oaks Tree Plan Amendment, SP 4658, considered amendment to the approved tree plan for the Oaks commercial development. The applicant is requesting to amend the tree plan that was last amended by the IPC on April 20th, 2021. Property is located at 3501 and 3509 Frederica Road, St. Simon's Island. Parcel numbers 0404951 and 0404952. Property is zoned local commercial. Brian Hunt, Robert Civil Engineering Agent for C. Marshes Development.
Stephanie Leaf, Planning Manager. Good evening, Commissioners. This is SP 4658, and it is an amendment to the Oaks Tree Plan. So in the tree, same time as tree canopy preservation ordinance, there was, there is not really a process to, to amend a tree plan other than coming back through the Island's Planning Commission for a site plan amendment. So you may recall back in April of 2021, there was another amendment to their tree plan that came before you all, and that was approved. And then recently, what occurred was, there was a tree along the Atlantic side of the, of the project, a large live oak over 60-inch diameter breast height, that was planned to be the preserved tree. And that tree is located right here. So that was shown as a preserved tree on the plan, and what occurred probably about a month or so ago was they were doing some underground utility installation, and although there had been tree fencing and tree protection set up, unfortunately, the contractors involved in that removed that and then did underground a trench through the structural root zone of that tree. So the applicants are making a best effort to still preserve that tree, but because of that extensive damage, according to our tree ordinance, the county really can't consider that a, a preserved tree on the tree plan. And so what, what they have chosen to do is, like I said, they still are going to make a best effort to, to keep that tree healthy as long as they can, but given the damage, it can't be a counted preserved tree. So they have, they actually had the appropriate number of trees already on their tree plans. They don't have to add a tree to the site, but they did have to move around some of the open soil area calculations, and then our county arborist did ask them to move a tree that was supposed to be over here, actually move it over to, I think it was this, was it this location or this location? I'd have to double check that. But anyway, moved from this area over to the interior of the site. I do have the original tree plan on the screen if anyone needs to refer to that. And this is just a zoomed in version of it. And then this was, tree number four is the tree, and this was taken before the construction began on the site. And then this is a view of the tree, and the building, as you can see, is under construction, and this is kind of looking into. Yeah, it wasn't supposed to happen.
Mr. Chair, I mean, Stephanie, what is the status of the mitigation effort to try and save the tree? And have there been any consideration for penalties for tree damage and potential loss?
Yeah, so kind of answer the second, so this second question about the enforcement and whether ha, there have been any penalties, at this time, there has not been a citation issued to the owner of the property or any of the contractors. And so that's, that's all I can really say at this point. I know we, we did notify them that they need to go through this process, and in terms of the specifics of what they are doing to, to help that tree and make a best effort, I'll defer to Mr. Hunt to, if he can go into some more details about what they're doing on that.
Are there any other questions for staff?
You stated that nothing has been done, but is there any consideration for the possibility of doing anything?
That, that is something we have talked about and looked at the ordinance. It's, it's been pretty clear in our ordinance, if someone does completely remove a protected tree, so any live oak that 38 inches diameter or breast height or greater, if, if that is removed from the site without getting permission from the county, then there are clear, clear penalties in the code on how to deal with that. We have had, actually, just this year, several owners that have had, have paid fines because of that. So this tree was not removed, it was damaged, so we have been discussing that, but I, I can't tell you at this time how the county might handle that.
Any other questions for staff? Mr. Hunt?
Commissioners, again, still I'm Brian Hunt with Robert Civil Engineering. I hate that we're here tonight over this. This has been a project that's been very, very long in the making and long in trying to get this thing approved and built and finished, and I think we've all kind of faced a handful of hurdles and challenges as a result of it. To, to step back a little bit on this project, this was initially, originally, this was first started in early 2019, when we started going through some initial site plans and communications with, with some of the, with, with county and staff, and, and I think some of our first iterations were in early 2019. This, and on my behalf, this was, that was, I was a new employee at Robert Civil Engineering, and this was one of my first tree plans that I got to do, as well as, I think it was one of Chuck's first ones that he got to, he got to review as well. So me and Chuck was kind of new in the trenches on this, and I go back and I look at the, if we could pull up the site plan, Stephanie, if you don't mind.
There, which one, or the?
The, the current one's fine. That's the, that would, there we go. So actually, we can go back to the first one, the, the original one. So do you mind if I step up to the one more?
Please.
So when we first did this, this was, this wouldn't fly today. I mean, this, I would, I would approach this development around this tree probably a little bit differently just per ordinance. Stepping inside the structural root zone already with this building is already violating the ordinance, which essentially says that if we go, if we impact a structural root zone of this tree, which is where the tree protective fencing goes, that we can't count the tree. So initially, we could have, we could have applied to have this building exactly where we have it, and just not counted this tree as one of our protected trees, and then did what we want, not have to put any fencing up and, and anything. I think that in mine, and even, and I won't speak on Chuck's behalf, but what my approach was, hey, we're trying to get, you know, as close to it as we can, we want to protect the tree, go forward, you know, we wanted to save it. There was another tree that was down here that was this well that we were kind of encroaching in, that we came up with a couple of creative ideas, a tree well and such, that I think the county arborist was kind of against. So he asked us if we could have asked to have this one removed, because he didn't feel this one would have a real good chance, and we removed this one through a second tree modification, if we could go to the new tree plan, Stephanie. As development came along, though, the county did come and put a turn lane here, which did encroach into this tree, as well as us putting this building footprint here. The tree, the poor tree itself is already, we're way, way inside the structural root zone of this tree, so technically, this tree shouldn't count. So the right thing to do is that we do plant an additional tree somewhere in order to meet zoning ordinance on it. So fast forward to a few, a few weeks ago, as the, the underground contractor who is very well-known here, done a lot of work, does a lot of work here, does very good work, they, they were on site with joint water and sewer, and I think between the two of them, they're like, hey, here's an easier, shorter, quicker route that they could have came up with, and nobody, neither one of them were skilled in the, the tree ordinance and/or the implications of going through the structural root zone of that tree. In doing so, we've since had two arbrists, two independent arbrists who've came out and have, came up with some pretty clear instructions on how to mitigate that, which we have included in part of our original, our secondary submittal. It does say on it that there, you know, special care on it as well, in order to mitigate the damage that's already done on this tree. But then also, in order to meet the, the ordinance, which the tree ordinance is done by tree count, which is unfortunate. I think that there's, there's times like this where it's, and Stephanie and I had this conversation earlier, it's a big tree, you know, it's pretty, we all like it, and, you know, but we can't, you know, the ordinance is, it counts the numbers. And so what we've done is we, we're meeting the ordinance by planting an additional tree, and we're going to do everything we can to save this tree, to ensure that it has, it remains healthy.
Any questions for Mr. Hunt?
I do. Mr. Chair, thank you.
I do, Mr. Chair, thank you. Brian, if I, if I may. So I saw some notes on what the mitigation involves. Has that began?
Yes, sir. To my understanding, it has. That was to have began that very next day after the arborist. And that, the notes from this arborist was Raj Ditmer, who came out, and this was his suggestions in, in, in the mitigation effort.
Didn't that not include trimming the canopy?
So there, so there is, of the two arborists that we had, one of them did suggest that we, they, they trimmed the canopy on the side that the, the road's on, because that is the more, the side that it's leaning on. Essentially, we've already trimmed the one side next to the building, kind of even the tree up, and that would further force that tree to use, to only supply what's there as opposed to supplying everything, which it can't do. Raj Ditmer didn't, didn't think that was adequate. He didn't think that that was necessary. So it's, it's one of those, it's one of those, you know, I don't know who's right. I don't know which one's right in, in those two.
Right.
They're both skilled professionals.
That's, that's fine. I, I don't, I don't.
There was consideration given to that.
Okay, good. That's fine. I just wanted to address the comment you made. Had you been involved in the beginning and had this all?
And I had, I had, I was, I was very involved in the beginning.
Okay.
This was, this was my project from the very beginning.
Okay, so let me restate that. Indulge me for a second.
Yes, sir.
You stated that this was your first, and you would have done it differently had you known what you know today.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
You made the comment that that tree would not have been, not have been counted.
That's correct.
In your tree plan requirements, but I have to caution you, you may not have had that choice, because this plan came to us for a, it originally involved a zoning change.
That's correct.
So on that basis, we could have required you to include that tree. Wouldn't have been an owner's choice based on what he wanted to build, okay? This is a pretty significant tree. And I think to have, if you had all, to do it again, you would have discounted it. I don't think that would have been a good decision either. I think that building would probably have needed to be redesigned.
Mr. Duncan, I, I want to clarify that when I said I wouldn't have counted it. I think that we still would have gave every, every effort we could to have kept that. And I think there are, there are ways we could have maybe shrunk some of this or moved it around a little differently than we did. Especially, especially considering we know, knowing now that we, we've removed that one tree as well. What I meant that it wouldn't have, I wouldn't have counted is not to have discounted that tree, it's that it wouldn't have counted as towards our count in there and that, that tree, an additional tree would have been added elsewhere.
Anyway.
Yes, sir, that's correct. Not, not in any way, I'm, I'm a huge fan of the trees.
Yeah.
That's, I absolutely love the trees on this island.
Right.
And want to do everything I can to help design around them.
Yeah.
Not in any way discounting that tree.
No, and I, and I appreciate that. Which one last comment? This is the second time you've come back to us for.
Modification.
For a modification to the tree plan.
Yes, sir.
And it looks like, you know, we're not where we were with saving these trees as a result of the subsequent design that was pursued. So the commission, at least I do, I feel like we were taken a little bit because the trees that were promised, including the first one that was taken out, and then now a second one has been damaged, we don't know if it will survive or not. It may, and we hope it does. So it's a little bit concerning that, how this has transpired. And I think in retrospect, to me, it looks like we just put too much on that small parcel. I mean, there's not a whole lot of green space left.
I, I, I can't say I, well, I would disagree on, on one count, and not that it's too much on this parcel. I think there is a lot of, of impervious material. I think that as this plan is developed, if you remember, there were two additional lots that were in the back of this that were kind of part of it, and then I think they got sold off at a, at a, at another time that was, but the, with regards to the, to the, to the first tree that we came back to remove, that was at the request of the county arborist. We, we tried to keep that tree. We did some designs around it that would have gave it open soil, some, plenty of area for water. It would have required a tree well, just because the elevation change. And it was the county arborist require, or suggestion that the tree be removed. That's where we came back through for that first modification. The second modification, which is why we're here today, I do think it's unfortunate. I think that, you know, in, in, at, at times, we do the best we can with trying to present a plan and trying to come up with the, the tree fencing and the tree detail. And I think it, it's unfortunate that it, it got to where it was impacted in the, in that tree zone. I would, I would, I would argue that the impact that was made for the reason that we're here today is probably not the biggest reason that tree would die if that tree was to die today. I think that there is other mitigation, mitigating factors in it, both on Glen County's side and, and, and the developer's side. I think that, that we've kind of squished that tree in, but I am, I am encouraged in that I could walk down this park right here and I find plenty of trees with a lot less green space in that, that are growing just fine. So it is, in, in, in our arborist's opinion, they feel the tree's going to be okay. I think that we're, we can't really know that for five to seven years from now, is that when we'll start to really get a better understanding of it. But the good news in all of it is that now this tree has a plan that we are now putting in writing as well, that we're going to do some extra efforts that maybe we wouldn't have done two weeks ago or a month ago, whenever this mitigation did happen. I think that now we're in, in a place where we're starting to, you know, make sure this tree's water fed and that it's being regularly maintained. Or? No, those footings for the drive-through canopy are no longer going to be there.
The canopy is no longer going to be there?
No, the canopy will be there, it'll just be attached to the building.
Okay, be a cantilever?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
A canopy?
Yes, sir.
Okay, right. Okay. All right. Sorry, thank you.
Any other questions? We do take, we do take comments from the public. Any of you people would like to come up here and comment on this, on this application? You're more than welcome. Okay, we're hearing now, public, the public comments closed. Commission?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve SP 4658, Oak Tree Plan, Tree Plan Amendment.
Just a second.
Have a motion and a second. Any, any discussion on the motion? Hearing now, who will call the question, all in favor, please raise your hand. That's unanimous, thank you. All right, the last thing on the agenda is actually mine, and this is, this is just an update, there's not going to be action required tonight. I think you'll recall from our last meeting, I introduced the possibility of some ordinance amendments that would mainly aimed at putting, at getting a handle on short-term rental as it relates to a single family. I put together sort of an intense statement. I, I started writing something that would look like ordinance changes, and I thought, no, I need to back up and, and kind of, kind of make sure that we're all on the same page as, as to where currently it's just me headed, headed with this. And to make sure that I have, have a commission buy-in, at least, at least to explore, explore these issues. And if I may, I'll, I'll read the statement I made. Short-term rental market on St. Simon's has become very lucrative in the past few years. The market for those seeking vacation or second homes on St. Simon's has been driven largely by the added income that could be derived by putting their home in, in the short-term rental market. It has also encouraged those building or remodeling to consider larger homes with more sleeping rooms. The added sleeping accommodations are especially desirable for large groups looking for a vacation, a vacation home for a short stay. This is called what could be described as, as a plethora of many hotels in areas that are zoned for single-family use only. The recent addition of the short-term rental ordinance of Glen County has legitimized the use in single-family neighborhoods in spite of the obvious commercial aspect of short-term rental. The intent of the, of the single-family zoning district, as clearly stated in the zoning ordinance, is to discourage any encroachment by commercial, industrial, or other uses capable of adversely affecting the residential character of the district. The good news is that the new ordinance requires anyone using their residential property for short-term rental must apply for and possess a valid accommodation excise tax certificate. Recent reporting has stated that in spite of, of the recent pandemic, the tax collection from short-term rental has increased significantly, which will add to the tax dollars needed to run the county. The bad news is that the market increase in the number of dwellings used for short-term rental has increased the number of visitors to, to the island, which adds to the traffic congestion and disturbance in this, in the residential neighborhoods. The intent of any of these proposed changes to the zoning ordinance is not to ban short-term rental from residential zoning districts, but instead to recognize the use and its potential to discourage overdevelopment of single-family lots in order to gain more rental income. This is especially the case for smaller lots, primarily on the south end of St. Simon's near the beaches and village. However, short-term rental dwellings exist in many neighborhoods all over the island. The proposed zoning ordinance changes would potentially put limits on site coverage, consider sleeping room density, and revisit parking requirements for single-family residential uses. These changes would necessarily affect all homes in a residential district, whether they are used for, for single-family or short-term rental. The aim is to have reasonable development limits on single-family homes that currently do not exist. That, that's, that was kind of, kind of the intent of, of where we're going. Of course, I've been in contact with Cap, Cap Fendig, our Allen Commissioner, who's, who's very adamant about trying to, trying to get our arms around, around this phenomenon that we're currently going through with short-term rental. Kind of, I'd like to just open it up for discussion. I've, I've had some, you know, before I do that, I, I did, Commissioner Brock alerted me that C. Allen has recently changed their design guidelines, which was very interesting. I went and pulled, pulled that up. Their design guidelines does have site coverage limits now on their lots, and it's sort of a graduated scale, starting at 50% allowable site coverage, and then actually going down as lots get larger. In other words, they're 50%, and the larger the lot, the less you can cover up percentage-wise. And they've also imposed square footage limits on the size of structures as well, which is very, very interesting. That's the first time we've seen anything like that in Glen County.
And, Mr. Chair, a question. Could you clarify the very last sentence?
The aim is to have reasonable development limits on single-family homes that currently do not exist. Currently, site coverage limits do not exist. The, the.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm talking about.
You're referring to the proposed ordinance, not the current homes or vacant?
No, no, no. I'm just, I'm just talking about the, I'm talking about the ordinance changes, the site coverage limits, single-family parking standards. We've got those, but right now, you can have as many bedrooms in a house as you wish, and you're only required two parking spaces. In other words, you can have a six, six-bedroom house and two parking spaces by our zoning ordinance is all that's required.
What, what are some of the things that we should look at relative to parking?
Well, I, I think, it's sort of a, and Will, you may be able to, you, you might want to chime, chime in on some of this. I don't think we can necessarily segregate short-term rental from, from homes that are just, just residential use. And I, in other words, I'm not sure how we would do that. In other words, somebody could build a home that's for short-term rental, or build a home for residential use, let's say, and then turn around six months later and say, no, I'm going to rent it out. So there's no way to really segregate how we would look at those changes. I, I, I would think there has to be some graduated scale. In other words, right now, I would think it'd be reasonable that a three-bedroom house should necessarily only have like three, three parking spaces. And maybe a four-bedroom, four-bedroom house would require three, some, some graduated scale.
Would that include indoor and outdoor parking?
Well, that's, that's, that's what we need to discuss. That's, that's why I didn't want to put any numbers on this, because as soon as I did.
Yeah.
I think, I think we would start, we'd start having some challenges. So what I'd like to do tonight, anyway, is, is, is at least get buy-in that this is something we ought to explore. Site coverage limits, I've been, in fact, way back when, when I first got on the planning commission, site coverage limits on single-family lots was, was something I proposed, gosh, 20 years ago. What, what we're seeing is, especially on East Beach now, is, but the homes are setback to setback, and then they cover everything up with the driveway. So there's very, very little room left. It affects the drainage. And of course, oftentimes, there's very little room left, left for parking as well.
Mr. Chair, I think that really, one way to attack this would be to have some site coverage restrictions and also the number of parking. You know, that, you know, we're not going to fix the problem of what's current. I don't, I don't see how. I mean, we're not.
No.
The Board of Commissioners may, but it seems to me we could have some restrictions on site coverage, which ought to, what ought to be, you know, that's going to eliminate a lot of these substandard lots that people are doing, you know?
What, what is the current limitation for site coverage?
There is not.
So in the, in the village, preservation, we have 50, 50%, correct?
Right.
Other than that, we, we have nothing.
We have, we have nothing in single-family neighborhood at all.
And so one concern, and by the way, I'm, I'm open to having this discussion on that particular aspect, but I am concerned when it comes to substandard lots that already exist. If we were going to try and apply a 50% coverage rule, take a 4,000-square-foot lot and then say you can only have 2,000 square feet of coverage, we already have 16-foot-wide homes occurring in Glen Haven. And so then those would become 10-foot wide.
Well, maybe so. Although you got to remember, the smaller the lot, the, the smaller the square footage of the open space is, as well. Actually, if you stop and look at the numbers, when you get that small, the setbacks almost make the 50%. Because the setback doesn't change, right? On a lot that's 40 feet wide, you've still got seven feet on either side.
Fair enough.
Seven feet in the rear.
Yeah.
20 feet in the front, even though the lot's smaller.
I got you.
So, so I, I think, I think if you actually put the numbers to it, you'll see that it really doesn't, it really doesn't have that big effect on the smaller lots.
Right.
Perhaps we'll have a work session?
Yes, I think, I think, I think so. I, yeah, at a certain point, a work session would probably be a good idea. One, one thing I'd like to, again, kind of hold with the commission is, is what, what about, what about density, sleeping room density? You know, currently, we have sleeping room density in, actually, resort residential currently, for, for, for short-term rental, is more restrictive than East Beach would Resort residential currently has, has a 50% site coverage. It's got a sleeping room density of 30, 30 rooms per acre.
Per acre.
Right. So it's actually more, more restrictive there than East Beach or than some places in the village. So I, I think there's can be some reasonable standards. My fear is, is as we go, as we go along, and more and more, and we've legitimized the short-term rentals, by the way. I, I think the ordinance we've got is, is good, but at the same time, it's almost encouraging short-term rental, because now I can be legitimate, I can have my short-term rental and pay, pay my taxes. But my concern is people are going to see this as a, as a business opportunity. In fact, they already are seeing it as a business opportunity.
Yeah, we, a case in point, we've got a house down the street from where I, I live, and there's seven or eight cars parked in the grass.
Right.
I have no idea how many bedrooms are in that house.
Well, I think I failed to bring the short-term rental ordinance with me tonight, but, but I think, I think the, the limits, 15, 15 persons can be in a short-term. But I think the limit's 15 persons can be in a short-term rental. That's the maximum. That's a lot of people.
Yeah, it is a lot of people.
Potentially a lot of cars. And things that are, we've got a definition for family. If you look at the definition for family and apply that to a single-family neighborhood, which I assume that that's the reason the definition is in there, it kind of makes you wonder, how does this work with short-term rental? Does it necessarily say the same thing? I don't know how you enforce the definition of family in a single-family neighborhood anyway. I think there's, Will, you want to, you've got something to say?
Yeah, I mean, you've hit on one of the issues. I will say that Glen County's official position and policy has been that short-term rentals are included as a permitted use in a single-family residential neighborhood. There was actually litigation about this several years ago, and that was the position the county took, and that was upheld by the judge. I'll also let you know that there's a lot of state law restrictions on what counties can and can't do, and cities too, to regulate short-term rentals, which is one of the reasons why the short-term rental ordinance that's on the books is as limited as it is. There's state laws, and you know, there's a lobby that's gone up there and gotten a lot of stuff passed at the state level that just really handcuffs counties and cities from doing regulations which specifically target short-term rentals. So I think to your earlier question, if you're going to put parking restrictions, site coverage restrictions, that sort of stuff in the zoning ordinance, it's going to have to apply across the board as far as residential stuff goes. You're right about that.
I think, Mr. Chairman, if our attorney could find out what it is we can and cannot do.
Homes should have this parking requirement, then you've got the whole menu of choices in front of you as far as what zoning, your zoning powers. So you know, those kinds of things, as long as it's being applied equally across the board as part of a zoning ordinance, then you can do the things you normally could do with a zoning ordinance.
Right. I think that's where it gets really crazy, since we have existing, obviously, existing homes and neighborhoods that may be grandfathered, but when they go to make a modification, then they would have to adhere. And it was no intention of them to be a party house, but they may have a lot of teenagers with one car each, as we have, not we, but meaning our community. So I'm a little bit concerned. I agree with what Mr. Will has said, that we kind of need to understand the boundaries. But if it's what you just said, Will, well, we're kind of there already, then that's concerning. Now, I have one question. Are HOAs exempt from the short-term rental? Have to be allowed?
They usually have their own covenants.
Right. Has there been any challenge to that in the state?
When you say are HOAs exempt?
So
If a homeowner has an association that says you can't have short-term rentals, that's allowed by law. I mean, they are allowed to have that stance, are they not?
As far as I know, if the rule is set from a county level, I would think that, yeah, any covenants or anything that say you can't do that are fine, because that's a contractual relationship rather than county or city setting ordinance as laws.
Right, okay.
But if you're in a subdivision that allows, doesn't prohibit that, and you're running a short-term rental, then you are subject to the ordinance.
Set it up to the short-term
County ordinance.
Yeah, right.
How is the short-term rental truly enforced? I know they're supposed to do an application in reference to that, but how is it really enforced? You know, they tell you, it's residential, you know, this would be our family home, or this would be our vacation home, but yet they are renting it out to others. So I'm just curious, how will we go about enforcing that?
Mr. Rooks, I haven't been, I'm not on the enforcement end of that, and I, the first time I looked at the short-term rental ordinance was this afternoon when I got this email, because I didn't have anything to do with drafting it or shepherding it through. So I don't know. Again, I think Occupational Tax Office is the one who enforces it, so I don't really have any information on that. I think we did hire a company who went out and found, scoured Airbnb, VRBO, whatever other sites exist out there for advertising these, and found a list of homes that are being advertised. But yeah, you'd have to ask somebody from Occupational Tax. I'm not sure how the enforcement part's going.
I think I've understood, though, from some of the reporting, that the buy-in to short-term rental has been pretty good. I mean, people actually complying with that ordinance, and rationale for them being is they are now legitimate. And I think that's, you know, the short-term rental ordinance did almost exactly the opposite of what you would think. It didn't discourage anybody. In fact, it actually has encouraged, yeah.
Legitimized.
Yeah, it's now a legitimate business that I can have in a single-family neighborhood. And my concern is if you've had a four-bedroom house and it rented, and you were able to get 10 people in there, and I could add one more bedroom and get 12 plus two, by the way, according to the ordinance, then what on? It's that much more revenue. So my concern is as time goes on, that this could really get to be a real problem, and we really need to put a bracket around what's allowed. I don't think what we'll end up with if going through all of this and trying to imagine all the setbacks we would have and discussions we have, that'll look a lot different from what we've got today. What I'm concerned about, what's going to happen tomorrow.
Commissioner Rooks, Mr. Chairman, I just got a text from Cap Fendig saying that we enforce the ordinance by complaining only. So if you live next door to a big party house and you complain about it, they'll come out and check, make sure they're compliant with the ordinance. So that's how they do it.
Okay, because I know
But they also have that company that talked about
Okay, because there is a home in the area where I live, and of course, they've changed their parking area where the cars, they park in the front, at front. From time to time, I may see, you know, seven cars there, then another time, three, then later I'll see seven or eight cars there, so.
It's a real issue, and I think we have to address it. I don't think we can just say it'll take care of itself. And I don't think, even though the short-term rental ordinance does have some parking standards in it, if you read through there, but the parking standards, I think, actually relate back to the zone, or back to what's required by the zoning ordinance. I think, Will, I didn't bring it with me. I should have. Anyway, if we have buy-in, I think we should continue the discussion under what the commission thinks, if we should try to do a workshop or what. I'm more than willing to continue working on this, and my thought was my next step would be to at least identify the portions of the zoning ordinance that we would be looking at. Obviously, the parking, we've got a parking ordinance, we'd be looking at amending that. I don't know that we need a definition, Will, for short-term rental or not. In fact, we might
I guess I would caution you
Not to do
Not to aim any of these specifically at short-term rentals.
Okay, well, then we probably shouldn't have a short-term rental definition.
Yeah, I would say, to the limits, yeah. Again, I think in the, we've done what we can on the short-term rentals and other ordinance, so I think this should be more about what your standards you feel like should be for single-family
Right, well, that's, that was what I thought in the end, was that this will just have to apply to, and primarily smaller lots. Obviously, if someone has a half acre, we aren't going to, I don't know what we can do to, you know, to regulate something that large. But I mean, you could have a half acre and somebody could put an eight or nine-bedroom home on it, and gosh.
Turn it into a hotel.
It's a hotel, folks, it is. I mean, we could talk about it all day long, but it's a mini hotel is what we're getting to. I mean, when you get that many bedrooms, gosh, you could have a, and my concern, too, is potentially gaming the system where you could have lockouts in a single-family home, where it's, you could have more than one group renting one house. Although I think the short-term rental ordinance has something in there that says you can't do that, but I don't know how in the world you'd ever regulate it or know that it's going on. So that would give you even more potential for rental. I could rent two bedrooms out for this group in the same week, rent the other three to someone else. A lot of potential to gain this system. That's all I have, folks. Any further comments on this issue? Now, I think, Stephanie, let's continue to put this on the agenda every time this word update, even if nothing's been done. I think we should update it every time, just to prevent us having to add it to the, until we come to some sort of resolution. I'll try to look at the possibility of putting together a workshop on this after, I guess, I'm kind of alone unless you want to jump in with me, Patrick.
I think I would volunteer previously.
Oh, okay. See, I wasn't the chairman, yes, yeah. It was only a request. This is a little stronger now. Okay, but good. As soon as we have, as soon as we get to something, we'll talk about it. If nothing else, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Mr. Second, all those in favor may leave.